Well, good evening. Everyone, welcome to the August Hoboken Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone's had a enjoyable summer, or if they say they won't be. September's the most here, so we allow the business to take care of tonight. But before we do, we have to take care of some proceeding business. Ms. Lozada, Lopez, can you read the statement and lines, please?
Yes. This meeting is being held in conforming to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, etc. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on August 22nd, 2020. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board issued to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV, Channel 77, and BIOS, Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Apps, which can be accessed through District Home. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants currently silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting. And if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct a personal business.
Please rise up and leave.
Ms. Taggertori, here. Ms. Delarue, here. Mr. Denver, here. Ms. McGurk, here. Mr. Carrier, here. And Mr. Flippel.
Here. I'm going to try maybe over immediately to Dr. Johnson for the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening. This evening, I am happy to report a few different things. The majority of them are directly related to the opening of school. Our plans for reopening have been submitted to the county office. And a couple of things, just so everybody knows, the New Jersey School Boards Association has recently published a list of districts that are opening right away and those that are opening with remote. Although we're a district that is opening only per one week remote, it's listed in the New Jersey School Boards Association document as Hoboken being remote. So just so everyone knows, it's a collection of, the governor's office wanted to know how districts are opening. So it could be day one, it could be day two, it could be week one, but that's what it represents, just so it doesn't confuse anyone. Fifty-two percent to forty-eight percent was our ratio in terms of a split for remote versus onsite learning. This evening, on the agenda, we have our school calendar, our district calendar, that's on there with some revisions. Those revisions include making some changes. This is the first year that we're going to be opening with four days of teacher staff training and room setup, office setup, different things like that. Followed by one full week of remote learning, in which the district is going to cover things that are critical, such as social and emotional learning, reviewing of all of our plans, so that the implementation of the plans is clear for everyone. Walk-throughs of our classrooms, meetings of classes, both for onsite students as well as remote learners. So all of those things are going to be happening in the remote learning week. So once again, week one, from the 8th until the 11th, is going to be dedicated to just staff. And the following week, from September 14th, through that end of that week, will be dedicated to a week of remote learning. Following that, we'll be implementing our plan that provides families with the option of either sending their children back to school in an onsite model or choosing remote model for one month. It'll go through October 9th, and at that point, we will reevaluate. We'll reevaluate on the perspective of whether families would like to make some changes. We will reevaluate it on the perspective of staff members. We will look at attendance rates, we'll follow trends, and we'll be ready to pivot at any time if necessary. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the HEA, the teachers, the clerks, the technicians, for their work this summer and being ready for the opening of school. I'd like to thank the custodians and the pairs, and all groups came together, so that we can present an opening of school that meets the needs of not only our students, but also the staff in terms of options for onsite and remote learning and teaching. So with that being said, we couldn't have done it without all of the groups coming together and really, really, really looking at what the district at this time needed in terms of coming back to school. But like I said, it's important for the Board to understand that each day, you will be provided with information, statistics, any kind of trends that we need to look at. And at moments' notice, families will understand that we may have to shift to a different model if any conditions change. So we're set, we're ready to go, our PPE is in, we're still waiting on a couple items that the nurses ordered. Those items are actually coming next week, we got confirmation on that today. All of the desk shields arrived for the high school yesterday. There was a delivery of three hundred of them yesterday and the remainder have arrived today. The elementary school desk shields, some of them arrived today, some of them will arrive tomorrow. And then the desk shields are done, they'll be put in place. The custodians are continuing to work in the classrooms and in the hallways, et cetera. And we are going to be doing a walkthrough on Friday in order to develop a checklist of any items that might be outstanding or anything else that we might need in order to open on the 8th when the teachers come back. So with that being said, those are the plans. If anyone has any questions about them, by all means, please feel free to ask. But I'm extremely grateful for the work and the collaboration that we received from all of the units to get our plan up and running, and I look forward to seeing it in action in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Or is there any questions now? Well, I think on behalf of the Board, I would like to express our thanks to you, Dr. Johnson, to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, to the administrative team, to everyone, and the teaching staff for the unbelievably collaborative effort that was put into this summer. I don't know what anybody else was normally going to do this summer, but this was amazing. I got to see just a little bit of it firsthand through meetings and a couple of phone calls. So thank you, everyone, for that. It makes me proud to see us, all of the work that we've put into this district, coming to fruition in such a positive way. What we want to report is, what is over there?
No, no.
Yeah, of course.
One thing that I neglected to report out, and I wanted to make sure board members were aware of this, the community as well. On September 12th, the West Side Women are going to be hosting a flea market type outdoor fair, where they're going to be distributing school supplies, different things for students that need that. If anyone would like to make a contribution or would like to provide anything, such as backpacks or pencils or pens or anything along those lines, you can let me know and I'll contact Sandra Smith, and then we'll get those items to her so that she can include them in the flea market.
We did not have committee meetings this month, but the agenda was set up, and we had every time to ask questions and give you clarification. But at this point, is there any additional comments, any committee chairs, or a little about? Nope.
Tom. Facilities Committee, we'll have. Just on behalf of the Facilities Committee, I just wanted to point out two things. We had a couple of positions request, which were recommending for approval. But we also had a resolution on the agenda for the change of the name of the of the John F. Kennedy Stadium Veterans Field to the Lewis and Tagliari Junior Stadium Veterans Field. I just wanted to acknowledge that that is on the agenda tonight and acknowledge that although I didn't know him, I know how loved Coach Tagliari is and everybody else on the Board who want to remove him would like the same thing. I just want to give him an opportunity. But before that, I know this is a huge acknowledgement of everything that he gave to the district. But I also want to acknowledge the district's custodians, on behalf of the committee and the Board, for their hard work and dedication through this entire time. What they do is not easy on a regular day, there is not an easy job. And here's one of the knowledge and thanks again for all their hard work and their dedication and everything they've done for our district and continue to do for our district through everything that we go through, especially during this time.
Thank you. I do have a comment or a statement that Ms. Angley regrets not giving to me here tonight, but it asked me to read. And to follow up, Ms. Taggertori. Chairman, two weeks ago, our school community lost a very special man. Lewis and Tagliari Junior was a Hoboken legend. He was an integral part of our school community for 20 years, where he served as a teacher and as the head varsity football coach for 12 years, leading the team to four championships. He was the type of man you felt like you knew forever, and like you're blessed to have known him as a dedicated educator and coach, as a district parent, as a fellow Penn State fan, and as a friend. His warm personality and kind heart touched so many people. So yes, tonight on our agenda, we have a resolution to rename our athletic field with his memory and honor, the Lewis and Tagliari Junior Stadium Veterans Field. No one deserves this recognition more than Mr. Tagliari. He will be missed by all and by certain condolences throughout his family.
Tom, can I say something? I, like many others, loved Lewis and Tagliari Junior, known to me as Mr. T. I would see him at Wallace at the end of the day. He would chat and laugh. I didn't know him in the capacity as a coach, et cetera, but he was a friend to me and a supporter. He loved our district and completely dedicated himself to our district. He was an amazing person with such a big heart. My heart and prayers go out to Mrs. Tagliari, Trey, and the rest of his family. We will miss him terribly. Thank you, Lewis and Tagliari Junior, for everything you have given to us.
Sadly, our district had another loss this week. We send our long prayers and deepest condolences to our business minister, Joyce Gooden, and her family on the passing of her husband Kenny yesterday. Any final comments from the Board, questions, sign for public comments on the agenda items. I want to remind speakers, the Board policy, please state your name, municipality, resident, first, at least tell me, municipality of residence, and irrelevant to the topic of your comment, your business affiliation. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and I will quietly motion at the four-minute mark. Please address all comments to the Chair. Board policy states that the Board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the Board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent. Ms. Lopez, are there speakers?
Yes, we have three for agenda areas. The first is Roseanne Versace.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There are no words to describe the shock and sadness that we all felt and are still all feeling at the sudden passing of our friend and colleague, Lou Tagliari. Born and raised in Hoboken, Lou embodied the mantra, "Once a Red Wing, Always a Red Wing." He was a stand-up football player for Hoboken High School and became a legendary head coach in his own right, winning four championships before stepping down after 12 seasons in 2017. He served our country in the United States Air Force and was a veteran of Operation Desert Shield and Operation Desert Storm. He was a well-respected and trusted teacher to the students who walked the halls of his beloved alma mater, Hoboken High School, and he also taught at Thomas G. Connors and Josephus Grant Schools and served as a dean at Denver's Middle School for a short time as well. Whether teaching history or making history, he did it all in Hoboken and for Hoboken. While his success as a football coach is well-known, it simply underscores the dedication and love he showed his players off the field. In an interview debating the merits of playing football at a young age, Coach Tag, who started playing pop Warner football at the age of seven, stated that football parallels life. In football, if you do something wrong, you're penalized, and in the workforce, if you do something wrong, you're penalized for it too. He said football was one of the most important subjects you can teach, and teach it well, he did. His success on the field was remarkable, but he will be remembered more for motivating and inspiring so many young men to be the best they can be as athletes and human beings. He was a teacher, a coach, a father figure to his Red Wing family, and a husband, a father, a brother, and most recently, a grandfather. Memorializing Lou with the renaming of JFK Stadium, as many of us have known it, puts an exclamation point on the incredible mark he has made on Hoboken. Generations to come will learn of his success as a coach, but more importantly, by naming the place where he made and took his place in Hoboken football history, they will learn of the man he was and the many young men whose lives he's held shaped for the better. Once again, we extend our heartfelt condolences to his wife and our colleague and friend Gabby, and to his children Shane, Taylor, and Trey, and his newborn granddaughter Kennedy, his siblings Philip, Tanine, and Mary Ann, and his entire extended family. Rest in peace, Lou. Your sudden passing has touched our lives and hearts. Your inspirational life has touched us even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christopher Munoz.
Good evening, Christopher Munoz, 70, Upper Green Street, Banning, New Jersey. I just wanted to come up and I wanted to thank the Board personally, the Facilities Committee, Dr. Johnson, for renaming that field after my friend, Eddie. Everyone talks about Lou as being just an amazing football coach, football mind, a mentor, but he was more than that. He was a teacher, a mentor for so many, a friend, and our even brother. And he was my pretzel buddy every morning. Every morning we'd get together and we'd be in pretzels. And now I'm just trying to ask myself, who am I going to be pretzels with, you know? So having his name on that field means more to us than you can know. And I just wanted to point out that much more than a football coach, Lou Tagliari was a beacon of light to so many students. We needed him. A lot of kids have been troubled, a lot of players that have problems. In that darkness, Lou was that light. And so not only are we here in this room going to miss him, but those kids are. And a lot of us are wondering, how would it face those kids September 14th? What the questions that we're going to have and the comments they're going to make. I've had so many players, so many alumni that graduated, reach out to me, "Mr. Munoz, what happened?" "What happened?" And just reaching out, just having players reaching out, former students saying, having Mr. Tag on the ground is not going to do the same, is the sentiment that we all share. So at least I know that when I go down and I work football games and I see our kids out there showing their school spirit and their pride, that Lou's going to be with us every step of the way. So thank you, really, from the bottom of our hearts, for naming that field after you. Thank you. Thank you.
And the final speaker is Patricia Wade.
Good evening, Patricia Wade, 1219 Willow Way, Reno. I'm speaking on 12203 and naming the renaming of the stadium to Mr. Tag. I can't even find the words. I mean, I said it all about. Before Mr. Tag even went to Virginia, he called my house and said, "Ralph, stop answering the phone." And I promised Ralph I would share this because Ralph was like out of control. All the teachers know who you are, they try to help me and stand by my side with my son, Dr. Johnson, you. I met with you two weeks before the whole COVID concern around. And I just wanted to say how important it is to be involved in our kids' life and in their future, you know, being that, you know, they're in the school district. So I said, "Well, call the house phone, because if you let it keep ringing, you'll answer." So Mr. Tag gave Ralph his cellphone number, and Ralph put the cellphone number in his cellphone. So every morning he would call and say, "Finish your credit recovery. I'm going to call every teacher and make sure you finish your credit recovery. Come on, Ralph, call in every yard, you can do this. I'm going to let you start, you're going to play football, I'm going to see you on that field. I'm going to see you on that field, because we're going to beat this COVID and you're going to play football." So I was standing in the house in the dark when we got the call, and Mr. Tag had passed. So they got back to the football field on Fourth Street, and they told Ralph, "Mr. Tag passed." Ralph was hysterical, he called 17 times on the phone and kept saying, "Mr. Tag, pick up. I'm going to show you, that's a lie, Mr. Tag, pick up." And Mr. Tag didn't pick up, and I said, "Ralph, he's gone. Let's go, and I want to talk to you, let's go home." I tried to talk to him to calm him down, but seeing this tonight is so special to me because somebody posted on social media to start a petition to get it named. And we didn't even have to go that route. I have to talk to you, Dr. Johnson, for super seeing our schools and making this happen. Whoever made this possible, thank you so much. Just to think that I'm coming here tonight, the pink is because of us on the internet, about starting a petition, the job is already done. So that's what happens when you deal with professional people, with good ones. I just want to thank all of you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. Over. Well, number ten, so it's, who wants to be consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Motion. Yes.
Can you hold your vote, please?
Ms. Taggertori? Yes. Ms. Delarue? Yes. Mr. Denver?
Yes.
Ms. Connaught?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
And then Mr. Flippel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, thank you. Any other comments on the agenda items?
We got two. First speaker is Roseanne Versace.
Ms. Versace?
Good evening, I realize that in saying where I live and all that stuff, it's all time. I had comments prepared to discuss the reopening of Hoboken School. And as many of you probably know, that there are many teachers that would like a full remote opening. But I don't feel so right, Tom, to get into that tonight. Dr. Johnson and I have had other conversations, and we've had a conversation tonight. And, you know, she's right that we have been working together, and we've always worked together with the Board. And I want to continue that relationship, and I want us to come to an agreement together and not because of a speech I make. So that's all I'm going to say. So I, you know, I look forward to, I'll work them on Friday. I look forward to working on any issues that we have. And we look forward to an opening. We want to be back in the buildings, that's 100% sure. Are we afraid? Yes, we are, I'm not going to lie, I mean, people are. The more information you get each day, some things make you feel better and some things make you feel much worse. But I'm confident that we will work together on this, and we'll be back in the buildings. Or we won't be back in the buildings, whatever the decision is, but we'll do it together, and that's what we're here for. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christopher Munoz.
Thank you.
That was the last.
We will be going into executive session tonight for the purpose of discussing our attorneys on legal issue. There will be no action taken when we return. We'll simply close the meeting at that point.
Was that the public portion? Was that the public portion?
Yes.
How would the other speaker?
No, Patricia, I'm sorry, I didn't have you down there. Do you?
Please.
Sorry, Patricia, that was a little late.
For the public portion, this is just to address a lot of concerns that I was getting, and I'm trying to get Miss Ralph on the phone. Dr. Johnson, this is for you. I would definitely want to give, okay, this might be on the back, give kudos to you. I know it's extremely hard since February, when the COVID first really took full effect in March. I want to give you kudos because you handled it well. I know people coming from you, from all walks of life, with all opinions, and I blame you for everything, but you worked miracles. I mean, I would have lost it by now. And with all the different opinions, I know it's kind of hard, but actually, you gave everybody respect. I want this on the record to make it clear, we all was given an option. You sent out surveys, the way you handled it was phenomenal. And you're not going to be able to please everybody. I'm pretty sure you're not as Hoboken of heavy so far. But I'm just hoping that this Board will work with you, you know, and help you out with respect to all the opinions and all the negative, positive, whatever come your way. I hope they all get with you and work with you. This whole COVID is hard for everybody. Nobody is exempt from this. People have lost loved ones, family members, people don't have jobs, and I mean, and all of that falls on you because they come and they act out the way they feel and they get emotional. It's nothing personal. It's nothing personal. I'm more concerned about you now than your health because it's got to be really hard, you know, with this type of liability sitting on your lap. So, what I'm saying is, I hope everybody continue to work with you. Unfortunately, I missed the cutoff date on Monday because I'm going to still always try to run so I can be a board member one day and I'll be by your side. But, you know, good luck. Anything you need, let me know, you know, anything. I mean, the people that's coming to me too, I'm telling them the same. You know, we have faith in you. We know what's going to happen. Whoever's afraid, whoever's not afraid, whatever it is, thank you for your professionalism. You handled it well. Okay? And we just want to thank you. I mean, the mothers that sit in the vacuum, wants to choose remote learning the way you gave everybody an opportunity. I'm sending out their survey to try to consider everybody's feelings. So, thank you so much and such a good job.
Thank you, Ms. Muenz. So, Executive Committee will be going into session now. Do you have anything to say?
I just, to be precise, for the rationale under the statute, to discuss legal issues requiring discussions protected by the attorney collateral.
We expect this to be thirty minutes? Thirty minutes, okay. As I said, I wish my voters come back and close the meeting. There will be no action taken. I don't know, right? Do I have a motion?
Motion, second. I'm sorry, for a second.
No, we want to consent agenda, yes. That's good. Motion second, can I have a roll call, quick roll call, please?
Ms. Caden Torrey.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Ms. Denver.
Yes.
Ms. Kama.
Yes.
Ms. Figger.
Yes.
Ms. Carrier.
Yes.
And Ms. Kipel.
Yes.
That's all the session?
Yes.
Okay, it's now 8:20, and we're just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion?
Second.
Second. If we take a quick roll call?
Ms. Caden Torrey.
Here.
Ms. Delara.
Yes.
Ms. Philotuck.
Here.
Ms. Kama.
Here.
It's not here.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
You are here. You're voting to come out of the [inaudible].
Ms. Figger.
Yes.
Ms. Carrier.
Yes.
Ms. Kipel.
Yes.
With no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Now, this is all the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Meeting close.